Hi everyone, as most of you probably know already, I'm Simona and I'm Hospitable's community manager. You already know my dinner plans, so I'll just get straight to the point and kick off this town hall, the last for this month. And so just a quick reminder that our town halls are being recorded and they will be made available for playback, so you can listen to them again and get all those updates that you might have missed. And they're also available on our hospitable YouTube channel. You can also listen to those in the Clubhouse app. Make sure to follow us on the YouTube channel. We also upload some other useful content like trainings and workshops, masterclasses that we do. So lots of good stuff in there. So here tonight, we'll get started with some company updates and then we'll let you know what's going on with the business. And as usual, finally, we'll open up for a Q and A session. So when the time comes, you can raise your hand through the app and then we'll invite folks on stage to ask their questions. Please, please remember to mute yourself when you're on stage and so you're not speaking or we don't hear any background noise as a courtesy. In case you're not comfortable being on stage or don't want to be recorded, you can always ask your questions in the chat function and there will have Zach helping us escalate some of those questions to the stage or answering them directly in the chat. And with that being said, I hand it over to Matthew.
Thank you so very much for that, Simona. All right, we got a bit of a different team here today. Pierre's not with us today and no, we're definitely gonna miss him. He is not, as he mentioned last week or last time, he's on the verge of parental leave. His parental leave hasn't started yet, but they're ready any moment now. So if you're listening, all the best to Pierre and B Sarah here. We hope for a wonderful, wonderful experience for the both of you. So to get started, I'm gonna be presenting some of the company updates for you all. We'll get started with a recruitment update. We don't have any new members of the team since the last time we met unfortunately, but we are interviewing for more roles than ever. I know we shared that last week, but I just want to remind her that we are hiring software engineers, product managers, support reps and a head of marketing. You can visit hospitable dot workable dot com. Say that three times fast. So hospitable dot workable dot com. We also have a careers page on our site that you can take a look at and see all those roles. Keep in mind that we do have a referral or a head hunting bounty. Sorry, that sounds a bit cruel, a bit weird, but you can actually earn up to 2,500 bucks for any referral that actually does join our team. So if you know any great engineers, any great product managers, any great marketers, send them our way. We'd be happy, happy, happy to take a look at that resume, that application. So once again, hospitable dot workable dot com or just reach out to the team. We'd be happy to guide you or push you off in the right direction. Any challenges to share this week? Well, we do have one. So on Friday, Verbo made some changes to their API that our team wasn't anticipating, but our engineering team did an absolutely wonderful, fantastic job at restoring the vast majority of the functionality that we lost that same day. I have to give a huge shout out to Costin for all of his work. Also a great shout out to Sam and Christian for their help in getting everything online. You know, even all the way down to Brian for helping us with his account today. But it was a fantastic team effort and you know, proud to report. I'm pretty sure Toby will have some more updates for you just a bit later. And now on to the good news. So any success that we want to share? Absolutely. So as most of you know in here or any of our repeat, you know, we are accepting individual investments from our community. So we hit a massive milestone recently where we passed the initialization threshold of 750,000 in investment. So essentially what that means is the value of our token, which is what you get through your investment can grow now and it has. It's actually sitting at just over $5.10 per token. So that means for any of you that have been on the fence about potentially investing, it's time. So our investments and company, as our investments, as our company valuation continues to grow, so is the value of that token. That means that the cost that you're purchasing it at will grow as well. So sign up today at invest.hospitable.com. We're available for any questions with that. And we're super proud of the investment that we've raised from our community. True testament to the belief that our hosts have in our software and we can't thank you enough for that. So we love to share some customer growth, some revenue growth for you. Customer count, we're growing 5.82% over the past 30 days. A bit of a slowdown from our average over the past three months, which was just over seven and a half percentage. But even with that said, June is on pace to set the all time high for new trials at hospitable. So still good positive numbers that we should be proud of. And with revenue, you know, a 7.86% increase over the past 30 days. Again, just under that three month average of 8.14. But those are both strong numbers, like I said, that we're really, really proud of. You know, we can continue to push here at hospitable. And we're always exploring, you know, new ways to reach more hosts and to continue to grow our customer base. And one of those new ways, you know, going on to a marketing update here is we just sponsored the STR Nation meetup out in California, out in Southern California. Brian's still very jealous of you for attending. We're thrilled to get out, meet some hosts, meet some potential new hosts as well. And today we're actually sponsoring the STR to Wealth Luncheon and Cocktail Hour down in Charlotte. So if you're there, be sure to stop by and say hello to Alyssa for us. You know, as part of the new initiatives where we're looking to reach out to more groups, reach out to connect with more hosts who are just getting started or you know, who are newer to the industry. So again, if you know any great events, don't hesitate to share them with us. And you know, we had this past week or the week before, check out our YouTube channel for that replay of our latest masterclass with Sarah and Annette from Thanks For Visiting. They provided some amazing insights, some super simple little tips and tricks that are gonna make your guests say wow when they take a look at your listing. You know, things like making sure your light bulbs are all of similar sizes, things to do with your curtains. It was absolutely amazing. You can go to youtube.com and then it's forward slash hospitable com, right? No period in between. And you can find all that great content that's gonna help you earn some more bookings, help deliver a stellar guest experience. But they were phenomenal. It was one of the more popular events that we've had thus far and we really appreciate them sharing some tips. They do a great job, full of great energy. They're really passionate about the industry. So a huge shout out, thank you so much to Sarah and Annette from Thanks For Visiting. And then we are going to have a hospitable host workshop coming up in the month of July. So this topic's gonna go around how to grow and scale your business. We're gonna take some of our hosts, some of our amazing, wonderful hosts. They're gonna share their experience from scaling, of scaling, right? How they went to one to many. So keep an eye on the invites, they're coming soon. You know, make sure to register, make sure to join us and hear it, you know, from the horse's mouth, if you will, on how these hosts grew their business. They're gonna share with you their successes, their challenges, so that maybe we can avoid some of those and take them up on some of those great successes that they had. And then lastly, we do have another new initiative planned for you. We're gonna be launching our hospitable hosts club program. So if you want to become a club leader and help us spread the word about hospitable, watch out for your emails we're gonna be sending out this week. You can apply and get the chance to organize some in-person events for our community and introduce more hosts to our great tool. And we're gonna have some special, some very special rewards for our active club leaders. So definitely make sure that, take a look, apply if you're interested. We'd love to have you become part of our brand new community program. So I covered some products, covered some recruitment, some marketing updates. I think, I think I'm gonna pass the mic, if you will. I won't pass it to you because you're all the way down in Florida and I'm in Portugal. But Zach, if you will, take us away, give us some customer updates, some numbers to share, please.
Yeah, definitely. Maybe you could box up the mic and send it on over, you know? It'll take a few business days. Thank you for those updates. Let's hop into how the customer updates are doing and how are things doing on the support side of things? As always, one of our key metrics that we look at as far as how enjoyable our product is to use, how well our service is doing is the NPS, which is a net promoter score. If you haven't heard of this, it is a, you might have seen it when you're browsing around the dashboard. There'll be a little pop-up asking you to rate our product from one to 10. Actually, I think it goes from zero to 10. And you're able to put in some comments there and we collect that feedback and we help that, we help, or that helps us plan out our next features and figuring out some ways to better improve our product. Over the last 30 days, our NPS is at a 30-day, on the 30-day rolling average is, right now it's set to 58. Some of the things that have kind of been challenging for us on the product side of things, of course, is the VRBO incident that the engineers kicked butt on. And some of the things that are definitely bringing us up is the ease of use of our system, the fact that, you know, it saves our hosts a ton of time and really the robust messaging features that that seems to be the biggest positives that we see in the comments when it comes to the score. A quick reminder here as well, we like to shoot for over 70 or 75. That's kind of our goal. So even though we're at 58, you know, there's, there's some room for improvement here, definitely. But one thing to note is that even 50, that's still considered excellent and 75 is world class. And we all know we have a world-class product here, so we're excited to kind of get that, you know, kind of moving back up here again, once we get VRBO all sorted and some new surveys coming in. Speaking of surveys, we also launched a new initiative to start collecting customer feedback and satisfaction scores. When you now, when we close a ticket, you will get an email sometime after asking us how we did, asking how the rep did and asking you to give us a score, so that way we can take that information and use it to better our service. The goal of the customer satisfaction score is to help us ensure our internal measures of customer success, of which there are a few, are aligned with the external feedback that we're getting from you. So if you've taken the time to fill out one of those surveys, thank you so much. Your feedback definitely means the world to us. And what we do with that feedback is we use this to identify opportunities to improve our product, improve the support experience and even help maybe individual reps, maybe help coach them on things that they could have done differently. So really, really appreciate your, the effort there because I know it does take time out of your day. So I appreciate it. With that being said, I'm very proud of our CSAT score. We're now sitting at 85% overall and that's from 168 responses that we've gotten over the past month. And from those 168 responses, we actually have 65 comments that were left for us as well. And what's really nice is that we can kind of glean some, some recurring themes from the comments. And so the most common keywords that we see in our comments are helpful, great and quick. So this definitely gives me the warm and fuzzies as well as the team warm and fuzzies. The team that we have on, you know, on the hospitable side of things, we're not only here to support you, but we're your customer advocates. So when we're able to not only deliver, you know, great support, but make sure that you feel heard and, you know, talk to you about like what your needs are and maybe take some of that feedback into consideration. It gives, kind of makes us all real excited and we love reviewing this sort of information. So thank you again for your time in filling that out. Last but not least, I know Matthew kind of mentioned it already, but we are continuing to expand our team on the customer support front. So maybe by the time, next time we meet, we might have a new face, maybe not, maybe so. But I'm very excited to get that going as well. Oh, one more thing I wanted to mention is that the whole entire team is super excited about. And I think you'll be excited to hear about it as well, is that we are working with the engineering team very closely on something that's called, that we call a consolidation week. For those of you who are in engineering, maybe you already know what I'm talking about. For me, this was a new term. So what a consolidation week is, is that we're going to have all the engineers team wide dedicated to tackling the most painful bugs that our customers have reported. So this is a dedicated team-wide engineering effort. So I thank them in advance because I know we were kind of organizing a few things and taking into consideration some feedback that we've gotten through intercom and through the live chat. So definitely, you know, not only do I want to say like, I appreciate the internal team in advocating for you guys to make sure that we tackle the most painful bugs, but also I want to, you know, send my appreciation to the customer base for sending in, you know, when things don't exactly line up or when there's a little hiccup with the, with the system. So that way we can take care of those for you and it'll be smooth sailing ahead. Let me see here, that is all that I had for you today on the customer side of things. And without further ado, I'd like to introduce my good friend Toby on the engineering side of things to talk about product updates. Go ahead Toby.
Thank you so much Zach. Okay, I'm on top of the engineering team, I'm taking the product updates today. And yes, everybody's looking forward to consolidation week and we're gonna have that done. So first thing, talk about Verbo. So we had an incident with Verbo where they changed some of their endpoints and what resulted, it resulted in us having some sort of issues where some hosts would have experienced delays in detecting reservations or slightly off checking checkout times. Now these things happen and we don't get notified when these changes are made. So we always have to like respond or react to it. Thank you to Sam and Costin for enabling us recover. We're able to recover from that incident in about 15 hours. And so we, most of the functionality is back online, but some hosts may still be experiencing incorrect checking or checkout times. But this will definitely be resolved. In the meantime, it is possible for you to change the checking or checkout times if you notice any incorrect one from the conversations page. So somewhere where you see your information about the reservation, the times are there and you can just modify that from hospitable. What we're working on is the ability as well for you to modify checking or checkout times at the property level. Yeah, so that's what happened with Verbo. And up next is the iCal. So over the past few weeks, we, iCal got some love from us. And what we've done now is we're working on the ability to allow our hosts to put in the iCal that they would like to support or they would like to use within hospitable. And for this, we've done through a lot, gone through a lot of discovery because we're trying to bring the best possible iCal experience. And so we've done, we've gone through so many ideas and we're coming up with something that we feel everybody's gonna love. For now, we're releasing this to our beta program. So only users in the beta program are going to be, get this when we first release it. And when we do, we're only releasing it, the ability for you to add the iCal feeds. So we're not yet going to release the ability to use those feeds to do anything, all the relevant stuff, for those who come in subsequent updates. Smart Locks, so for smart locks, we have our smart locks and we've shipped a few more enhancements to make it more stable. We, at about maybe the 20th, we had the situation where some hosts have experienced delays in provisioning their codes. Thank you Christian, this has been resolved and we also keep monitoring the situation of that integration. We are also working on remote lock integration. And now what remote lock integration does for us, it gives us the ability to support more locks like Yale, August, QuickSet and other types of locks. But for now, we're going to start by focusing just on August and on Yale first. And then when we have those working, we will try to release like more support. So but that's what we are currently focusing on right now, integrating with remote locks to give us access to August and Yale locks and to make us modify them. So we'll give you more information on this in subsequent town halls. Moving over to direct, the ability to alter direct reservations was shipped to private pilot last week. So which means now when there is a reservation that came through a direct, you can modify it or change the date or change whatever needs to be changed about that reservation. And we also have like a payment processing pilot where we had like few users and we expanded those three users to 10. So currently we have 10 people or 10 hosts who are able to collect payments using hospitable. Now we are, have those 10 people so that we can get feedback from them. And we are going to, through their feedback, fix the nuts and bolts to see everything just ensure that it's exactly as we expect before we go on to releasing to everybody. So the next focus for the team with regards to direct is the auto-host integration. And for those who don't already know, the auto-host integration is for, it's part of our premium offering because we'll be offering a basic and a premium offering. And now what it's going to do, it's going to give us that ability to verify the, your bookings that you come through direct. So when a guest or host comes and tries to book with you, we try and validate the information the person provided with different things, thanks to auto hosting. So this is what we're going to be working on next. And more information about that will be shared in subsequent town halls. And I think with that, I'm done with the product updates and I'd like to pass on to Simona.
Thanks Toby. So now we can open up for questions. If you have a question, I remind you again, you can raise your hand and we'll invite you on stage. If you don't want to be recorded or don't want to be on stage, you can ask your questions in the chat and we'll have someone from the team escalate them here. So yeah, shoot us questions.
Thanks so much, Simona. Oh, everybody, thanks so much for, for all of your insights here. You know, just a thing to know, I know Zach shared this over in the chat, feedback.hospitable.com. Zach, you can share that in the chat once more. So if you have any feature requests, you want to add votes, you want to see whether some of the things that we have the potential to work on, whether other people asking, you can go to that site, upvote your favorite requests. Like I know we see a Hoofi integration, right? We get that one regularly. So go ahead, add your vote to the Hoofi integration. You could even add your email in there as well. So if there are any changes, any updates, any notifications, you're gonna be one of the very first to know. So that's a great place to make sure that your voice is heard, your voice is counted. I've even saw a few hosts share some links in our social media groups lately, like let's get people on. And we do pay attention to that. We're taking a look at those different feature requests as they come through. And you know, when it's time to build that next feature, you know, like when we took a look at iCals, looking at which channels were the most popular so that we can ensure. And I do believe we got some Hoofi iCals last week. So the idea would be that we'd be able to at least pull in some of the reservations with that iCal connection. Not sure where that is on the list, but it is something that, that we hear you on specifically. All right, looks like we got John here. John, what's up man? How are you?
Hey guys, how's it going?
Like, like we said to start, man, we're all living the dream here. That's, that's for sure, John. How about yourself, brother?
I'm living the dream too.
Sweet.
I have a question and then I guess a comment slash request. The first question is, you said you've been giving iCal a lot of love. Is that iCal coming into hospitable or upgrading the iCal going out of hospitable?
So that's for iCals coming in and technically going out possibly? I'm not sure Toby may have a bit there. No, not just coming in.
Yeah, just coming in.
So that we can pull in those reservations, we can eventually start messaging some of the guests on those platforms. And then we can update your calendars, we can update your calendars on those channels that we have. And you know, that existing iCal would be pushed out, you know, where you can connect Hoofi to your hospitable iCal to make sure that your calendars are, are up and running.
Okay, cool. So that clarifies, thank you. And then the request that I have, I just got off a call with guys from D-Travel.
Oh yeah.
D-Travel is a, you know, yeah, so anyway, I would, I guess I could go and upvote this, but it would be awesome for you guys to integrate with D-Travel. They are crypto-based or NFT-based OTA that gives power back to the, the operator and not to the OTAs. So I think that would be an awesome integration if you guys could be open-minded to that.
Yeah, it seems like something really cool and, and you know, heading into the future, if you will. Anybody, anybody here utilize that channel right now? Because that's always one of the challenges we face with some of those. It's, you know, what kind of volume are we gonna get there versus what kind of volume we get with some of the other things that we're working on, you know, to help our hosts, how many people are actually utilizing it? With that said though, you know, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? So I'm sure if we did have an integration, we'd probably see a lot more hosts get on there. If anybody's using that D-Travel or any, you know, any other channels really successfully, don't hesitate to, to share that out in the, in the chat. Let us know, let other hosts know, you may be able to pick up a new channel here today. But I appreciate that, John. They reached out to me, I think, yesterday. Once again, you know, we've had some, some kind of initial chats on, on what could be possible with that integration. But it is not part of the roadmap today, but I do always appreciate your, your vote of confidence for one of those feature requests.
Yep, and I'll just say, they, they're only accepting people on PMSs that are integrated. If you're on hospitable, there's, you know, you probably have not used it, so anyway.
Definitely. Or maybe you have because you can integrate more than one, but no, but yeah, makes sense. I appreciate that, John.
All right, thanks guys, have a great one.
Always have a good one. And before we invite the next person, I do have a question that I forgot to ask during my, during my spiel, if you will, earlier. We had a question for you hosts. Does anybody have different check-in or checkout times based on channels? So do you have a different check-in time for Verbo or different check-in time for booking.com? Is there any reason that you would have that? Throw that in the chat and share if you do, if you have any sort of strategy as to, you know, yeah, we, we let Airbnb people check in later or Verbo people check in earlier for ABC. But I'm under the impression that everybody would pretty much just go different. John, you do different check-in times, huh? Not different channels, but per property, that's, that's, yeah, that's what we'd expect. But we're interested in the, if anybody uses different times for different channels. So yeah, John, don't hesitate to elaborate. But anyhow, I digress. Who do we have up here next?
Hi, Jerry Lynn. Sorry if I mispronounced your name, but you can unmute yourself.
Hi, hi everybody. My name's Jerry Lynn, I'm living the dream here on the.
Hey, how you doing today?
I'm doing great. I have a question that might be kind of a stupid question, but I get, like I'm on the road a lot, going back and forth to my properties and I'll always get a phone call of somebody who wants to book through my website, which is yay, great. But for, for now, like when I'm traveling and I'm, I'm trying, I pull over and I'm trying to get their booking, I'm having to manually add up what their days are. Like I click on it to add the booking and I'm adding, having to add up the nightly rate plus the cleaning fee and then calculate the taxes and then go in and get their payment. Am I doing that wrong?
So what I'm thinking right now is you're doing that via hospitable, right? You're logging into hospitable and you're putting in those details. You're calculating that from your calendar. Have you tried maybe going on your direct booking site and like booking the flow for them?
No, I have not.
Because I think if you have it configured, Toby, correct me if I'm wrong, always, anybody, please correct me if I'm wrong. But I do believe that you have the ability to add all your fees, add all those different, different fees, different charges to your direct booking site. And then you could essentially go on your site and go through the flow as you are that guest. And then what that's gonna lead to is a request to book for those dates, but you should be able to see the total amount that you could then hop back over and share. So you don't need to open up the calculator and what's that times 3.2%? We should be able to do all that for you. Toby, any, any, am I, am I playing the same game here or am I in a different country?
You're actually spot on. So we would be, would calculate those figures for you. So once you've configured your direct booking site on hospitable, then you can do exactly what Matthew said.
Yeah, I just don't, I never thought about going into the direct booking site and going from there to their, to their, that, that works out great. And then there's a look at the calendar, to look at the dates to see if.
Exactly, yeah, so you should be able to go, I'm sorry, my internet was cutting in. But yeah, no, absolutely, you should be able to go in, select, you're gonna pick the property, you're gonna select the dates, you're gonna give us the guest name and email. You could even just put a temporary placeholder in there. And I don't even know if you need to go through with the request to book, but you may be able to see what the fees would be for those dates without having to go through the process. So give that a check.
That will make.
But that is, but that is some great insight as well though, right? So having a proper way for us to send a quote to somebody or to be able to pull up a quote, maybe without fully processing the booking. Ideally, they would go on your site and just go through it anyway. But you know, for some of those folks, like you said, who are giving you a call, having.
They all call me because I have a message that says you have to call because there's no way to take payment yet.
Yeah, so they have to go through, well, you, and, and I, as of right now, they can go through and at least process the booking request. That will hit you. You should have their information and then you would process that payment, you know, via Stripe or PayPal on the side. But they still can pretty much do the entire process without having to involve you. Pick their days, you know, get their price, get their total and just stop essentially at the payment.
Yep, nobody's doing that. And I think it's because my main website is, is the one that gets the hits. My hospitable website really isn't advertised anywhere. That's probably why.
And the other, the other item too is with your main website, depending on your, your, your technical ability or the team's technical ability, you can also have that booking link on your site for that.
It, it does. And then it says, call me because of the fact that they can't make their payment.
Yeah, understood.
Hopefully that's coming soon.
We're, we're working on it, yeah. And that's, as Toby mentioned, you know, we had this small pilot program. We weren't getting enough traction to, to really help us move it forward. We've opened up that pilot program. We've opened up that pilot program. If we need to, you know, we'll open it up a bit further there. Um, so that we can really get this thing tested and, and get it out to all you folks.
Well, I volunteer for the pilot program.
Volunteer as tribute. Alright, thank you so very much. Do you, do you have a, so did you fill out that form that we shared a, a little ways back?
Uh, probably not.
Okay. If you want, go ahead and send us, uh, send us your email in the chat and, and Zach will make sure to grab that for me and we can send you the form uh, to have you fill it out. We do have some questions. There are some requirements, you know, looking for people. Um, so that'll be easiest for that pilot. So yeah, we'll uh, grab, send out your email in the chat. Um, or you know, I think you can actually private message here. I don't know, I'm a neophyte for, for Clubhouse, but you can privately message as well and just send us your, your message, your email directly and we'll, we'll get that form over to you.
Thank you very much. Y'all have an awesome day and keep up the good work.
Aw, thank you so much. We appreciate that and same to you.
Bye.
Hi, Ed.
Hi, everybody. Uh, so kinda new to the hospitable platform myself, and I wanna say you guys have an amazing product. Absolutely.
Thanks, Ed.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, um, I will also drop my name into the hat at, at that last conversation about beta testing, uh, the, or piling features with like Stripe integration for direct bookings. That's something I've lost coming to the hospitable platform and it's very near and dear to my heart.
Okay, noted. I'm actually, uh, so I'm sending you a message right now. I just said hi, just go ahead and send over your reply to that with your info and Geraldine, I'll do the same to you. So we have it there on the side.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll send you the form, just fill out your info and you know, when we're looking for people to add to the pilot, uh, we'll, we'll definitely start there. So.
Great. Now, onto my question.
Let's do it.
You guys have, I, I see through the uh, the feature requests, a lot of people talking about integrating with all these different blocks. Uh, I use smart things with our boy apps, which already allows me, all I need is a good verbose ICal connection, which you already have. Which by the way, you guys beat Guesty out of that. All they give you is block data. So forget going to Guesty when you have this platform. However, I digress. You guys have a fantastic ICal with great reservation data that allows me to do everything I need to do from automating lights. Um, the heating HVAC system, the access control with the door locks. I don't pay monthly fees to do any of that. So I'm looking at the development effort that you guys have, getting all these different lock manufacturers on there. Which is really, if all you care about is access control, remote lock already solves that challenge. You already have an integration there. In my case, I don't have monthly fees and I'm using smart things. So I'm, I've already got the locks that way. There are already a multitude of ways to get your locks integrated with hospitable today. And we have other development efforts that I see that are really necessary. For instance, I tried to use AutoHost. They tried pushing me off to a third-party platform because I have fewer than 25 properties. And they'll connect um, Operto. Uh, none of them would support me getting to AutoHost. Then Auto, AutoHost says, well, we just can't support you then. And that, that's it. I know AutoHost is coming. Um, I think we need something like check-in, the C-H-E-K-I-N dot com.
Yep.
Some two-way integration there. What I need more than anything is A, direct bookings to process payments and two, I need the ability to sign documents because I'm not doing my own lease agreement. I am coming out of the public domain and going to the private domain with a PMA. Where in Hawaii, they've shut us down. In, in Atlanta, they've shut us down. And so, you know, the litigators are putting out these rules for people advertising to the general public. So what I'm doing is I'm doing the same thing that's been done with chiropractic services and other healthcare organizations with dry, dry counties in Texas. My documents are allowing me to keep my business going in the face of overarching litigation that are taking away our property rights. So I need that membership agreement to be signed by my guests before they book. And since I can't integrate with AutoHost and I can't integrate with check-in, I'm stuck. So when I hear about development efforts going to things like locks that can already be done, I wonder if maybe we're focusing on the wrong thing. I don't, I don't know. But I'm just throwing that out there as kind of a little bit of feedback or food for thought.
Yeah, no, we appreciate that, Ed. You know, we, we have a great community where hosts feel comfortable sharing those things with us and giving us some pushback and you know, challenging us on some of the things that we're working on. And we wholeheartedly appreciate that. It keeps us on our toes, no doubt about it. Um, and, and I understand completely what you're saying there. With remote lock, while we do have other options that are available, it's just one of the largest markets that have, that's out there. You know, our boy, right? You're using smart things. You have it connected to our boy or you're. Right? Is that what you're working, you, you're working through the our boy apps?
Yeah, I've got thirteen properties today from Lincoln down throughout Florida and also out to Puerto Rico and our boy app has been rock solid. I love it. And it's a one-time fee and I get all the automation I could imagine in that platform because it's really just, it's a smart things app. So it's a smart app.
Yep, exactly.
Things can do, I can do.
Huge shout out to our boy. Um, you know, they, they, they have a, a, a very interesting product that I do think a lot of hosts could benefit from, but you know, a lot of hosts are already using. They're on remote lock. They're using all these other different locks. Uh, so that's the reason it is one of the, the most highly requested features that we have. And to keep i- in perspective, like we do work, you know, we have an engineering team. We also work with third parties to help us engineer. So we're, it's not like we have, you know, all hands on deck, working on ABC. We gotta work on multiple things to push those multiple things forward. You know, and, and, and as you can't have too many, too many cooks spoil the broth. So we do have to be limited on how many people can work on those features and, and how they can do so successfully. So I hear you, even with the auto host integration, see, that's the plan is that by our integration, we're gonna be able to unlock all the hosts with under twenty-five properties. And the vast majority of our portfolio are hosts with under twenty-five properties. So we're opening up an entire new realm for them. And especially when it comes to that direct booking piece and everything that's included in it, you know, that's gonna enable you to go there. So we could work on, you know, a DocuSign, but at the end of the day, now we're working on essentially a way to share documents, share to go back and forth. And the guest screening element that comes on top of it to give you a bit more peace of mind. And then once we do that, the next step with an integration with a system like check-in is gonna be almost trivial because we've already laid such a good groundwork, groundwork foundation to be able to, you know, add additional companies to our integrations. Uh, because we've already done most of the grunt work for the basics of the integration.
Now, when it comes to AutoHost, is there a estimated time for delivery of that?
Ah, the estimated time of delivery around hospitable, that's not a, 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 no. So I know that essentially the team was gonna be challenging that, taking on that challenge next. Um, but no, we don't have a good estimated time for when that would be delivered. Um, I know that we've already done some work. We've, so it's not like we're starting entirely from scratch. Like we've already made some progress. It's just something that we've tabled, you know, until we're in a better place to, to jump in through there. But no, we don't, we don't have anything. Definitely go onto that feedback dot hospitable, add your vote to the auto host integration. Add your vote to any other integrations you'd love to see because again, we do update that so that we can reach out to anybody who was interested in that specific feature. And let them know, hey, be on the lookout, you know, it's what the progress, what those status updates are for those features.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Again, love your product. Absolutely fantastic.
That's awesome, Ed. And man, I appreciate you just got here and you're already trying to help us out, man. Thank you so very much for that. You know, that's one of the wonderful things I love about this community, like hosts are looking to get better. They're looking for us to get better. So they in turn can get better. So you know, we greatly, greatly appreciate it, brother. Thanks so much. Alright, Andreas.
Yeah, we have Andreas on stage.
Yeah, hello. Uh, can you hear me?
Perfectly.
Okay, it's the first time that I join uh, this uh, meeting. Uh, and uh, first of all, thank you very much to give me the chance to speak with you. Uh, I'm a new customer. Uh, well, I decide, I, I, I was checking on the market several products and finally I decided to be a customer from your company. First of all, uh, you're making a good uh, job. And I'm always looking for uh, to be perfect, you know, and not, but, but the, but the product, yes. And I would like to uh, share with you one suggestion. Uh, I don't know if this is the right place here just now, talking about a lot of ideas, but I would like to start with one. Uh, I figured it out. Um, when a, when a message is sented by hospitable to a client, uh, then on the he, in the heating, in the heat case, this message was sent using hospitable dot com. Uh, this info goes to our client and then uh, when I, I, when I click on hospitable dot com, then of course, uh, this is your main webpage and it's saying charm your guest with uh, wide globe care automated human sounding conversations. And then I, you can see the logo tip, logos from Airbnb, booking dot com and VRBO. And I would really like that this page uh, changed a little bit because finally, okay, you want to make promotion, it is good. But can you imagine that a guest from us, uh, first of all, he doesn't know, maybe, maybe somebody books on VRBO or somebody books on Airbnb or booking dot com or even on, on private uh, through another channel. And he doesn't know what is going, what is hospitable. And then suddenly he gets an email uh, from, from me. But you are um, putting on uh, the link to your webpage. And then he reads, uh, oh, what is this? And I, I think maybe it should be another page or another message to the guest. And not, uh, because maybe he thinks that uh, all the messages coming from a robot or something else because or I would even take out all the other logo tips because it could be that the client books from another company and said, oh, look, Airbnb, I don't know what is Airbnb. I will, I will look booking that comment. So maybe he gets a little bit confused. So my idea or my suggestion would be, he can make click on hospital dot com, but the message should be different because your message, what you're giving is more for landlord or what we are doing now renting a condo, but not, it's not a right message for guests who books. I would like to uh, hear your opinion about this.
Hey, no, thank you so much. And we appreciate the vote of confidence that you shared with. We appreciate that you choose, that you chose to use our system. You're a hundred percent right. There's no doubt about it. That is something that we have known about, you know, even, I mean, our entire email template needs a bit of help. The ability to change from the, the from so that it looks a bit more recognizable, changing some of the formatting and reducing the hospitable. Cause it's not a marketing effort, believe it or not. Again, we don't need to market to your guests. Like you said, it's something more for the landlord. Um, you know, for the people who are managing the properties, most likely that guest is not. But it, it's essentially, it was something that required too much work at the time and we needed to move on to other things. But I have no doubt that once we progress further along with direct bookings, we're gonna allow for a lot more customization. Uh, maybe not a lot more, but we're gonna allow for some customization. Similar with your direct booking site. It's really limited in the early phases of what you can customize with us. But that is not, you know, that wasn't something intentional. We're not trying to market to your guests or, you know, build anything along those lines. Uh, an easy fix, I just, you know, when you mentioned that having a different landing page, you know, your host cares about you, they're a hospitable host or something along those lines. So it's not again, wasting some, some marketing, some clicks that they don't really need because there's not gonna be an added benefit to them. So you're, you're not far off. I do appreciate that. Um, I think that there is, you know, some I'm not sure exactly in that feedback page, if there's something to adjust the formatting. I think there may be a couple to adjust the email address that we're sending from. Um, and then there was another one to adjust some of the formatting and the templates that come with those emails. Not something that is the most pressing for us unfortunately at this time for you. Um, but it is something that we're aware of, you know, we completely understand. We, we wanna reduce it. I mean, I know we're, we're gonna keep hospitable somewhere on your direct booking site because that gives us an SEO boost there and it's helping us out on that end in some way, shape or form. But when it comes to the emails to your guests, like there is some work to be done there on the formatting. Um, you are not wrong. You're not off by any means there, Andreas.
Okay, uh, yeah. Another suggestion is it would be nice able, to be able to send also photos. Uh, at least one photo, not only to Airbnb, also to VRBO and booking dot com. My question is, why is it possible to send also at least one attachment, a photo to the other channels? Why is it only possible to Airbnb in the moment?
Ah, because all APIs are not built the same. So that's the reason why. So Airbnb allows it. The other channels don't allow it through their messaging tool. And it is something that we do hope to allow for your direct booking guests as well. I mean, between me and you, right? Let's, nobody else in the room here, I would absolutely love the option to be able to send different messages to different, so hey, if you have a Verbo guest, you can send these via in-app, but then we're gonna send an email off to the side. Right? So I can send an email to that Airbnb guest with my direct booking site. It's not gonna go through the Airbnb communication tool, but it's something that's off to the side there. So that we can give them the link. We don't have to worry about blocks. Now they have my contact info and being able to go through there. Um, but back to your question, I digress. I have dreams of a great, of, of different communication uh, channels that we could utilize, including SMS, including WhatsApp. But with the APIs that we're using, with what those channels are allowing us to send, Airbnb allows that one image. Whereas Verbo, booking dot com, they don't allow any images to go through, um, what we have access to.
Okay, great. And last but not least, I don't want to uh, use all the time because there are many people in the line. Uh, I like your uh, uh, the possibility to create an internet webpage uh, on the direct, you're saying direct.
Correct.
But I'm missing a little bit more uh, like uh, options like, you know, when you create your, your, your text, you have only one color.
Yep.
White color and then you have to find the right photo that somebody can read to the text with the right color. I would like to have a little bit more uh, options like different colors and and the logo, uh, you know, when you create a webpage, uh, you have your own logo and the logo is doubled. You can see the logo on the top, you can see the logo on the bottom. Uh, should be only one logo. So uh, uh, you're working on it to give us a little bit more tools to create a better uh, design for this direct webpage?
Absolutely. We hope that not everybody's gonna be utilizing that raspberry pink coloring scheme that we have there. I'll do, I, I do personally love the raspberry pink. Um, but you're, you're spot on there as well. I, we actually started to have some other templates designed for us and that's where we are in the process. We are working with another agency who's gonna come in to make it even easier to implement multiple different designs and configurations, customizations that you can include in there. So yes, you will have your logo up at the top. You can change your color scheme. Um, you know, and, and the, the made by hospitable will be a bit there reduced, but the plan is entirely for you to have customizable templates, but you know, a library of templates that you could utilize, you could select from so that it's not all just one size fits all. Um, you know, colors, branding, being able to adjust a lot more than you have uh, available to you today, without a doubt.
Okay. Oh, sorry. And I forgot, not, uh, I, I, I just only want to say something else. Uh, I, I, I learned that my guests from booking dot com, they are not responding on uh, hospitable, hospitable uh, uh, message. Because they are still using, even they get a message from my, my, my main board. But when they respond, they respond always to the booking dot com uh, dashboard. I don't know why. Maybe you should check this, why the, why the guests maybe get confused because I don't know. Uh, from my booking dot com guests, I never get a response uh, through your uh, uh, webpage.
And they're, and you have it configured correctly? So they are at least receiving? You know that for a fact that they're receiving those responses, uh, those messages from you?
Yes, yes. And uh, I was asking if it's possible to add a second email, uh, to make sure that, you know, a, a second email. But anyway, uh, I will check it out and maybe I will send you an email and give you more uh, information about this by my experience.
Yeah.
But, but only booking dot com guests are never responding me through your platform.
Interesting.
Yeah, it's interesting. But I, I, I don't know what other people are saying, but it's my experience. Okay. Thank you very much.
Send, uh, yeah. So you could always reach out to our support team, support at hospitable dot com. Share some details. Um, you know, that's something we'd be happy to look in, make sure your configuration, make sure everything's set up accordingly, if there's any opportunity.
Yeah, I, I have a meeting with Denise on, on Friday, uh, and I will uh, share my information with her. So thank you very much for your time and.
Oh, Denise is wonderful.
Thank you.
Great. And just uh, beforehand, be sure to share that info because then we'll be even better on that call. We'll have had to, we'll be able to have done some research before. So that when you do take those thirty minutes, you know, the, well, we should have more of an idea of what's going on there. Appreciate it, Andreas. All the best to you. Thanks again for the kind words, my friend.
Thank you.
Alright.
I've invited um, Sean to stage and Ash.
Sean.
Hopefully they come join us.
Anything going on there in the chat, Zach? Anything, anything to share, to escalate?
Oh, there we go. Yeah, there's been a few questions, but I've been sneakily sending them to Simona. So she's got them.
Wonderful. What a great team. Ash, how you doing, man?
I'm good, Matthew. Thanks for having me, guys. Um, nice talking to you guys again.
Oh, it's Ash. Alright, hey, what's up, man?
Yes, buddy. Um, I'm good. Um, we're in, we too, we're uh, trial, we're loving it and we're just diving into so many features. Um, as we go into, I know we briefly spoke, uh, Matthew, but um, the idea of the metrics and how to integrate with Google Studio Data, um, is something I'm very interested in learning about. Um, and also just how the metrics will evolve with your platform, if there's going to be a um, a, a more detailed analysis page that we can understand our data points a little bit better.
Yeah, absolutely. And you know, just to share with everybody, cause I think we may have touched upon this on, on the call that we had recently. But the idea is that metrics is gonna, is going to evolve and it's gonna be, it's gonna evolve, it has to evolve at some point. Because with our grand idea of being able to connect property owners with potential property managers and being able to provide, you know, an owner statement, an owner report, we need to pull that data and make sure that we own that data. Um, I, our old metrics product was absolutely, it was full of metrics, full of data, full of information. Um, I, our old metrics product was absolutely, it was full of metrics, full of data, full of information. So much so that people weren't utilizing it because it was just a bit too much. We don't see ourselves going back that route, but what we do see is having a more simplified. Because I mean, what are you really concerned about, Ash? Right? Occupancy, occupancy versus a previous time period. Probably revenue, revenue versus that previous time period, right? Rev par.
Exactly.
What else? Is there anything else really that is keeping you up at night that you want to make sure that we're tracking here for you?
Yeah, no, that, I mean, you hit the, the nail on those two big things. I feel like there are a couple of things that are more ancillary, but those are the big meat and bones of what we're looking for.
Yeah, we got, we got John and too. So we'll be, we'll be asking him some questions when that time comes as we start to build it. Cause I, I know, you know, he's on top of that there. With the, the Google Data Studio, you know, that was something I actually, I had a, a shower thought where I was like, I need to go in there and try to build some sort of template, build something that we could easily share with other hosts. Um, so you may, you may motivate me there to do something there on the side, you know, after the kids have gone to bed bright and early here in Portugal. Um, but yeah, and if there's anything else, right? If, don't hesitate to ever share like, hey, this is something that, you know, we're looking at. This is something that's important to us. Uh, it may be important to other hosts and it may be, you know, a consideration for when we do work on metrics and and deliver a better product there for, for our hosts.
No, you know, I appreciate that. And I also appreciate the opportunity for this town hall. It's, it's really great to hear, not just from you guys, but from other fellow hosts. It's very insightful.
Yeah, that's awesome, right? We love connecting and, you know, uh, check out the Facebook group as well, even if Facebook's not your fancy, but just going in there and asking a few hosts for some advice. You know, I love seeing that. I love seeing hosts help us because I mean, we're all in hospitality, right? We're, we need help.
Absolutely. Appreciate it.
No worries, Ash. All the best. Thanks so much. All right, Sean. How you doing today?
Hey, what's going on, everybody? Um. I'll get the annoying part out where I asked for the review.
Review? All right, we will check that one off. We appreciate it, my friend. Um. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a town hall without hearing it, right?
For someone's time to do it, like I, it would be amazing for all the processes I have, streamline everything. Uh, the other thing I wanted to ask real quick is. I had a VRBO booking cancel yesterday and I know you guys have been having API problems, but. It's been canceled, but it's still showing up on hospitable's calendar and therefore I can't rent out the third and fourth of July at one of my properties. I've talked to support about it, but it's been about, you know, 28 hours or so. So if anybody could follow up with that, that'd be greatly appreciated because, you know, there's $2,000 nights that I can't rent out right now.
That we got to get to you. And you said you reached out to support. So, so they most likely have run the fixer, et cetera, et cetera. Um, yeah, well. Zach, if you could just give a, a quick review to that, uh, I know that we were seeing a lot more than we've seen over the past few days. Like they were making tremendous progress on anything that was still outstanding. Um, so we'll make sure to escalate that and and get any of that cleared. I do believe reports of that are minimal at this time. So we could definitely take. Do all that we can there for you, Sean, because I can completely understand the challenge that that poses for you.
No worries. Y'all are great. I appreciate everything. Thank you.
No worries, brother. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Is that all? No other raised hands? Saying so. Did I just do that good a job? I answered all your questions? Oh, man, if Pierre was here, we'd just be going non-stop, right? Um. Thanks for unmuting yourself with the giggle there, Toby. I appreciate the, I appreciate the vote of confidence.
Awesome.
Zach, maybe you have a question from the chat?
Um, yeah, uh, let's see here. Uh. I, I captured this one a little bit earlier. Um, it's from Kenny Lee. Uh, are there any plans to offer a scaled down subscription tier with hospitable just for the messaging aspect?
Hmm, interesting. I'd be interested to see what, what scaled down means. I mean, I, I do think we are one of the most cost effective solutions that's out there. Um, I, I don't know how much lower we could go. We did have discussions like with, with the direct, we're going to be opening it up. So that there will be multiple options in different tiers that you could subscribe to. And I think that'll be our first foray into that. Um, but, you know, it is something that I've thought of and others have thought of as well within the company. Uh, you know, being able to kind of have that, here's a simplified version. But again, you know, when we look at it, it's like, okay, how much could we scale down? Sure. Just throw in that automated messages. You know, if, if you're still here, throw in the chat, what, what, what would you pay for just automated messages? What do you think would be reasonable? I'd love to. To see what some of your thoughts are, you know, there because again, I, I mean, I know we've done some research and and taken a look at what others in the industry. And for what we offer, you know, we, we think it's pretty scaled down already as is. Um, so yeah, so I'd be interested to, to hear a bit more. It, it's something that we've talked about. With direct, we're moving closer towards that. So, you know, it, it could be something that we eventually offer, but nothing planned as of now. If that. Answers your question. Was it Kenny that you said?
Yeah, Kenny Lee.
Kenny, okay. All right, awesome.
Thank you, Kenny.
Ed, you're back. You got something else for us?
I do. I, you know, I kept, I kept it fairly brief last time. I had a, a couple of things I wanted to ask about, but I didn't want to monopolize the conversation either.
Hey, but if we got space.
I still won't. Uh, I will say since I mentioned our boy apps and I mentioned private membership associations to overcome laws, I'm getting a bunch of people. In, uh, this app who are messaging me, asking me for more information. Um, so shameless plug, if, if you want to talk to me, you just go to edrocks360.com because I do rock, you know, I'm really good at what I do. Uh, if you go to edrocks360.com, you can reach out to me and certainly I want to talk to the leadership team at hospitable more about what it is we do. Um, having said that, I want to talk about the AI messages you just mentioned. Um, you have this really fantastic opportunity in your operations. And this is where, you know, we can assign team members. This is where through your AI messaging, you're detecting, do you have a pool? Do you have this? Do you have that? And I love the fact that we get to assign that for individual properties to give a certain response. However, I would love to see actions as part of that as well. So when I know that somebody's asking a particular question. I would love to be able to assign an action, send them this or, or, um, notify this person or. You know, right now we can, we can do a reply to them using an automated reply, but some of the operations of, I could even just send them a link. That goes to say the check-in app or, or, or auto host or whatever the, the case may be. When I know that I'm getting a certain type of reply, I'm limited to what I can send back to them. And then what I can send back right now would, you know, I can send a link, but there's some additional options I would love to have, that would let that happen. And I think Zapier integrations should be absolutely on the forefront of development operations. Because that couldn't, that's going to open up so many integration paths.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Having some workflows, right? Most systems out there today having like a workflow where you could automate when they ask for this or they say this, then we trigger that. I mean, that's absolute next level there. Um, the great suggestion. I mean, I'd absolutely love to build something like that, right? Even a- adding it, like you said, to operations and connecting the different dots there. When it comes to Zapier. So we do offer webhooks that can help with reservations. We don't offer, you know, we, we haven't. Really opened up webhooks or our API to have the messaging component into it yet. So that is some major work that would need to happen beforehand. To be able to trigger some outside of the system web, uh, workflows, but you know, you're, you ain't lying, Ed, that's for sure. And I also just sent you a direct message with my email, Matthew@hospitable.com. You know, feel free to reach out. We always love to highlight our hosts and, you know, I, I know a couple of weeks back, we had some hosts in here with some great suggestions. Hey, if you want to create a blog post, you know, maybe something that we can add to our library, I'll help other hosts while, you know, still giving you some. Still giving you some credit, still giving you some, some love for your thoughts and ideas and just help promote it for you there. Uh, we're, we're definitely open to partnerships and definitely, definitely open to partnerships within our community as well.
Great. Well, at that, thank you so much for your time and loving, loving the, uh, development efforts that are coming out.
No worries, man. Yeah, we, we appreciate that. And, you know, with that one, Ed, I think we're going to go ahead and call it a day. Uh, Simone, you called it. I'm going to close it 60 seconds early. I can't wait for that veggie burger. Oh, man, some, some ketchup, some good American mustard because we get it sent over because the Portuguese mustard just doesn't, just doesn't do the trick for us.
Honey mustard or regular?
Oh, definitely, definitely the honey. Uh, definitely. I, I'm a huge fan of the honey, but the regular, we gotta get, we gotta get some, uh, franks. With French's, we gotta get some French's. We, we get it shipped over. We got, for any, any expats in the world, there's like a, a site, My American Market. And I go crazy there because I can buy things like root beer and Twizzlers and all that, that junk that my wife gives me all sorts of grief on. But we also get, you know, our Franks Red Hot and, uh, our mustard from there because of the Portuguese stuff, just, just that different. All right, we talked a lot about food. I don't know if you guys realized it, but I'm hungry. So thank you all so very much, Simone. I'll let you go ahead and wrap it up for us.
Yep. Thanks all for joining. See you on the next one. Bye-bye.
Have a great rest of your day, everyone. Ciao, ciao.
Bye.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate you. Bye.